Zero the bills and the block pass.
Returning to page nineteen, House Bill twenty-four seventy-seven.
The senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill passed and speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you. What Senate Bill twenty-four, uh, House Bill twenty-four seventy-seven does, it speaks only to Appalachian power and it allows large industrial customers to opt out and seek another generator. Under the agreement, they would continue to pay for the transmission costs, distribution costs that they would normally be associated with a bill. And with that agreement, rather than a normal five-year request to come back into the utility, it's reduced down to three years. It has, as far as I'm aware, peace in the valley. There were nobody objecting to the bill when it came through committee and I renew my motion that the bill pass.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson rise.
I thank Mr. President, speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Uh, Mr. President, I know we've got some folks that have interest in this bill, so I'll let them know right away. I don't oppose this bill. I oppose the underlying law, but I don't oppose this bill. Just so everyone understands, and I think the senator from Virginia Beach described it accurately, if you're a large industrial customer and you want to go outside the grid to find an alternative supplier, you can do that as long as you pay for the, the infrastructure surrounding the actual delivery or transmission of the electricity, and that, that's fair. The problem is if you want to come back into the system for whatever reason, because the independent power producer just couldn't keep up with the load or went out of business, you gotta give five-year notice, which is a significant barrier to entry and exit in this very critical industry. This actually lowers it to three years for, for Apco, so it goes from being a bad law to being a not-so-bad law, but not, not, still not a not-so-good law. So again, I'm glad we spent some time on this. We got a little bit of sunlight spent, uh, put on this issue, so to speak, and I'm gonna vote for it, but just understand the underlying law is a bad one.
To, uh, senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
And briefly, Mr. President, if I might.
Senator has the floor.
If something was to happen like the generator supplier to the large industrial actually did go out of business, had to go bankrupt, there are provisions to file to get back in immediately under, under the public utility. And so, so, um, this is just a cautionary thing, but allows the utilities to do some planning, long-term planning, based on load and based on what they're required to generate. And so, again, renew my motion.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill twenty-four seventy-seven? Seeing none, the question is, shall House Bill twenty-four seventy-seven pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, no zero.
Ayes forty, no zero. House Bill twenty-four seventy-seven passes.
On page twenty-two, House Bill eighteen eleven.
Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the amendment be adopted.
We've adopted the amendment. This is now passage.
Move the bill passed, Mr. President. Speaking to that.
Thank the senator, you have the floor.
Um, Mr., Mr. President, this is the House companion to the hands-free bill. It, it is almost identical to mine, just the amendment was inserted, um, you can't hold the phone in, in his hand, to clarify that. Still has the same enactment clause, reporting requirements, delayed enactment, um, education for the public and all that. So with that, I'd move the bill passed.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard? Senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Gentlemen, rise for a question.
Senator, rise for a question.
Yes, Mr. President.
Senator rises, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I ask the gentleman, uh, the amendment puts hold in his hand, where else are they gonna hold it?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, there was, there was a concern by some that perhaps in your lap, if it was sitting on your lap, if it were in your pocket, places like that, it could be considered holding, much as the definition of possession in the law is. This is just out of an abundance of caution that we put in his hand to make sure that you're not operating it with, with the phone in your hand.
I thank the gentleman.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill eighteen eleven? Seeing none, the question is, shall House Bill eighteen eleven pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-six, noes four.
Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-three, noes seven.
Ayes thirty-three, noes seven. House Bill sixteen twenty passes.
House Bill twenty-three forty-four, a bill relating to general registrars petition for removal, reported from the Committee on Privileges and Elections with an amendment.
Senator from Falk here, Senator Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of the amendment, please.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye, those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendment is adopted. Senator from Falk here, Senator Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a bill that is supported by the registrars. It is believed, I think, by most people to be both good for registrars and for electoral boards, and it adds an element of due process for the removal of registrars. And, um, what the bill effectively does is it takes it to circuit court and it allows a registrar to sort of litigate that process on the front end rather than on the back end. And I think most people believe it's a fairer process and incorporates more transparency. And so with that, I would ask that the bill pass.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Bath, Senator Deeds rise.
To speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Um, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, Virginia is, is an employment at will state. That means as long as you don't discriminate, you can hire or fire anybody you want to for any reason you want to. Registrars are hired by electoral boards. I want you to read this bill very carefully. I know that you have, because we're carving out a group of people, a group of public employees from that employment at will doctrine. Now, I don't know if you think that's good policy. If you do, that's fine, but if you do, there might be another bill next year.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson rise.
Uh, gentlelady, yield for a question.
Well, Senator Yield.
I'm happy to yield, Mr. President.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
I, I'd ask the gentlelady, currently, the electoral board solely decides who serves as registrar, correct?
That's absolutely right.
Senator has the floor.
Further question. And I'd ask the gentlelady, so if for some reason they became dissatisfied with them, let's say the registrar posted on Facebook a comment that was critical about the electoral board or one of the elected officials that might call into question their impartiality, the electoral board could just fire them on the spot, correct?
That's, that's absolutely right, Mr. President.
Further question.
Further question.
So, my, my question then is, if we institute this law, aren't we essentially delaying? I mean, we're, we're creating exception to the act, well, now only a circuit court judge can terminate that employment. Is that, is that what I understand?
Senator has the floor.
So, Mr. President, I think that, again, what the bill is attempting to do is not necessarily to stand in the way of the board's ability to remove somebody for a proper reason, but to prevent what I think some communities have found to be a problem, a real problem, and that is, um, it's undermining the ability of registrars to act fairly and impartially. They feel a lot of pressure, perhaps from electoral boards. This just allows an element of due process to that process. And, um, certainly if the termination was appropriate, I think that a circuit court judge would, would, um, support that electoral board decision, and I think it would be swift, and I don't believe that it's meant to be a roadblock to that process.
I'd just speak briefly to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Um, ladies and gentlemen, I, I'm, I'm gonna try not to duplicate my brilliant colleagues, Senator Deeds, but here, here's the bottom line. The electoral board basically will decide what the community does and the registrar serves at their sufferance, just like the city or county manager serves at the sufferance of a city council or a county board. And I think if you start putting in impediments to terminating somebody that for whatever reason loses the confidence of their governing board, I mean, who knows where this could end? We could have county managers we couldn't get rid of or city, city managers. So I, I think, as much as I hate to say it, I think this kind of cuts against democracy to, to have this bill.
Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill twenty-three forty?
Mr. President, if I may.
Senator from Falk here, Senator Vogel.
Just to respond, because I know the folks who've worked on this bill, both registrars and electoral board members, um, I feel like I'd be remiss if I didn't just offer an explanation. What you're doing with this piece of legislation is you are, um, putting the registrars effectively in the same position that electoral board members are in now, because this is exactly the same process that electoral board member goes through to be terminated. Um, and in the case that I think really was the genesis of this legislation, what happened was the person went through the process, um, it was determined that they were wrongfully terminated, but that process was then resolved on the back end, and it cost a registrar an enormous amount of money, and it was not the most effective way to deal with that. So this just moves it to the front end of that process, and I think, um, the registrars would be disappointed if I didn't, uh, point that out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from King George, Senator Stewart rise.
Mr. President, I apologize to the gentlelady, but could this go by temporarily?
Without objection, House Bill twenty-three forty will go by temporarily.
House Bill twenty-one seventy-eight, a bill relating to the Virginia voter registration system, security plans and procedures, remedying security risk, reported from the Committee on Privileges and Elections with amendment.
Senator from Falk here, Senator Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ayes thirty-nine, no zero. House Bill twenty-six eighty-five passes.
House Bill twenty-six eighty-six, a bill relating to Board of Zoning Appeals Vote Requirement, reported from the Committee on Local Government.
Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move the House Bill twenty-six eighty-six, uh, pass. Speaking to that.
Senator, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Senate, you may have remembered on Friday, we were going over some of these bills, and every time I'd stand up and move a bill would pass, Senator Stewart would stand up and kill the thing. And, um, and, and he brought this up, because this is, uh, from delegate night, this was adding to where, uh, the majority of whether something on the zoning board, Board of Zoning Board Appeals, uh, would be how it would pass or, or fail, it was worded in a way that it had to be a majority of the total membership rather than, uh, a majority of the total members present. And the senator from King George stood up and said, you know, liberty in America and all that, and, and said, you know, people, people, they, they could be like a man, a person of one making these decisions, if that person is the only person that shows up at the, at the zoning board. And everybody oohed and aahed, and it was amazing, and, and, uh, and I got mad at him. And then I looked down and in subsection C, already the law, in line forty-five, notwithstanding any other provision of law, general special for the conduct of any hearing, a quorum shall be not less than the majority of all members of the board, and the board shall offer equal amount of time. And so there is a quorum already built in here. But he scared me. But ladies and gentlemen, this basically allows, because you know, board members that are put on zoning boards, um, they are volunteers, they don't get paid, they've got other jobs, sometimes they can't make it to there, and so instead of having, having things having to pass on a majority of the total membership present, this is, or the total membership, this is allows for a majority of the total members who are present at the meeting. But there still has to be a quorum established, uh, by subsection C in order for that meeting to proceed with its business on its agenda. And so, Mr. President, now having answered the senator from King George's question, I now move that this bill pass.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from King George, Senator Stewart rise.
Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
Speaking to the bill, Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
I appreciate the remarks from the senator from Franklin, but I really appreciate the gentlelady from Arlington for voting no on this, because that's what allowed me to, to catch this bill as it was coming through. And what worries me about this is, the Board of Zoning Appeals members are appointed by the circuit court judge at the suggestion of the locality, and it's typically seven, nine, eleven people or whatever, and they have to hear all the appeals from determinations from, uh, the county itself, um, any sort of variance that a person wants. They really can, control what you can do with your property. And it always concerns me when you take away public participation, and that's what this bill does. It takes away public participation in the process. You know, I, I guess probably the most important thing we have in our judicial system is a trial by jury, a trial by your peers to sit in judgment of you, and I, and the founding fathers believed that that was probably the safest way to give us protection from the government or the king. This is similar to that. These are the folks, these are your neighbors, who help make these determinations if you need a variance or if you need something else. And if you only need members there versus a majority of the, of the appointed members, I think it makes it harder for you to get relief, and that's what concerns me. There are remedies for what the delegates trying to seek here. First thing you do is you appoint alternatives, alternates. If the member's not gonna be there to vote, you have an alternate that can serve in their stead. It's done widely across the state of Virginia. And if the person doesn't want to come and participate in the process, then you fire that one and you appoint somebody else. But when you start limiting the number of the public participating, remember, this is for protection of the individual, the citizen in the county, and so I'd ask you to vote no.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Arlington, Arlington, Senator Favola rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak to the bill and.
Here's the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask my colleagues to be very cautious about approving this bill. In fact, I would ask you to vote no on the bill. And I'll just, um, give you a little insight into what the Committee on Local Government heard. Several local government representatives stood up and said, essentially, and I'll try to summarize it, zoning administrators have very tough jobs. They're very skilled and they're experts, but they're people who agree with their decisions and people who don't agree with their decisions. The way this bill is structured, it makes it easier to overturn the decision of a zoning administrator. And in effect, it will put counties in a position of probably having to go to court more often than they would like to actually defend their sector plan or their ordinance or whatever it is. So, um, when I heard the debate from these experts in local government, I determined that this probably is not a good idea. Um, you know, localities are really charged with land use planning, and people are very emotional about that. Everybody likes land use planning in the broader sense, but when it comes to their particular lot, their particular, um, variance, their particular request for an extra this or an extra that, um, the county is then forced to have to balance that request against the broader good. And I would, um, I would argue that it does not help, um, in, in the long run, it does not help to enable, um, these decisions to be taken in a more willy-nilly fashion. So, for those reasons, I would ask that the body vote no on this bill. But if, if I'm the only one that votes no, I understand.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Rockingham, you know what? For what purpose, the junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Deese step rise.
Mr. President, this is a good bill, and let me tell you why it's a good bill.
Senator has the floor.
The Board of Zoning Appeals in Virginia Beach has eleven members. So to get eleven members who are lawyers and doctors and planners and engineers and scientists, to get all eleven members at one meeting is difficult enough, but to say you have to have six of those members to make sure that every item on the agenda, and there's thirty, forty, fifty items on agenda, that you've got to get every one of those heard and six people to support them is ridiculous. What this says is if six of those members show up, a majority of those, so four of those members would have to vote to get that project through or to get that variance through. It's very simple. This is a very good bill, and for our doctors and lawyers, whether they're delivering babies or they have to be in court, we've got to have some accommodations. They could be a farmer who the cows got out. You don't want to block the roads, you want to be able to get them in, to get the cows back in. But to hold up somebody's thing as simple as a handicap ramp or something like that because you're missing two or three members, why, that's just crazy. So I think this is a great bill. It allows people to move forward with their life, and it still is a majority of the quorum that's present. Thank you very much.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane rise.
Briefly to speak in favor of the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I, this is a bill that protects property owners. This is big government on one side, property owners on the other. Boards of Zoning Appeals do one thing, one thing only. They decide whether or not to grant a variance. The planning administrator is a powerful person, and occasionally, they, they are wrong or act arbitrarily. And, yes, yes, yes. And you take a property owner who decides he's gonna fight City Hall and decides that I want my variance, I believe that that, uh, structure ought to be allowed to continue to stand. They appeal from the planning administrator to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and if there are five members on that Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, right now, they have to have three votes, no matter whether, uh, three people are there or five people are there. So if three people are there, they have to get a unanimous vote in order to get their variance. With this bill, they only need two votes in order to get the variance. So this protects the property owners against arbitrary action by the powerful planning departments of our local governments. The plant, the Boards of Zoning Appeals have little remaining power anyway, but this protects, this is a modest protection to property owners that ought to be adopted.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speak to the bill.
Thank the senator, you have the floor.
We've all heard the rumors that there are, uh, exists in this building another body similar to ours. I've never verified it, but apparently, when, when they reach a quorum in one of their committees, they're so barbaric as they don't allow for proxies. I don't know how anybody operates without proxies, having seen how well they work here, but that's a basic principle of government. You establish a quorum, and then you vote with the majority. That's so common to so many things that we do in government, and to carve out, uh, this body as different from that, I think, was leading us down the wrong road, and I would ask folks to support the bill.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley rise.
President, I'm confused.
Totally confused.
You know, we got one, on one side, you got, uh, the senator from King Richard, um, King I think I got it right the first time, didn't I? Who was, who was invoking the founding fathers and making it seem like this bill hearkened back to the King of England and the, and the stamp tax. And then you had, you know, the senator from Rockbridge going, oh, liberty, freedom, America, you know, big, bad, over-efficient, big government against the tiny guy. I have no idea how to vote, and I'm talking about the bill. But ladies and gentlemen, I'll say this, uh, anytime that you can make sure that something protects the person that's seeking the variance from the zoning, uh, um, decisions is a good thing, and anytime you can streamline it, and anytime you can, uh, to afford, uh, local government to move more efficiently, you should vote for it. So I move that you, uh, that I ask that you vote for this bill, and I renew my motion that HB twenty-six eighty-six pass.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben rise.
Uh, very briefly, very briefly to speak against the bill.
Senator has the floor.
I, 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 I don't know if others in this body served on the local Board of Zoning Appeals as I did, but just as you can have people approve something with a very small quorum that might be right, you can also have people deny something with a very small quorum. So you need to have a representative, uh, an adequate number of representatives who are, who are a member of that body, and I just ask people to remember that just as easily as it can be to hold up something good, it can be easy to dispose of something that is not what we want to do, to approve something badly. So with that, I ask you to vote against the bill.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall House Bill twenty-six eighty-six pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes nineteen, noes twenty-one.
Ayes nineteen, noes twenty-one. House Bill twenty-six eighty-six fails.
House Bill twenty-seven sixty-four, a bill relating to voter registration, persons assisting with completion or collection of completed voter registration applications, certain identifying information required, reported from the Committee on Privileges and Elections.
Senator from Falk here, Senator Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move passage of the bill and speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a bill that this body once actually loved. We reported this out unanimously last year, and the reason we did that is because we heard from a number of registrars around the Commonwealth of Virginia, particularly those in college towns, that there are big registration, um, processes and, um, big voter registration drives, but there's a problem with that. And that is, if there are mistakes on those registrations or issues related to the collection of those registrations, there's no process by which a registrar can go back and correct it, and either tell the person who's doing it, hey, you're making a mistake and you're creating an issue for these people who think they're registered, or contacting the person themselves to say, hey, this is an issue, you need to, you need to fix it. So what this bill does is, it requires the person who's helping an applicant with the completion of their paper, and it only has to do with paper registration, if they're helping them with their application or they complete, collect a completed paper registration, for them to provide the name and phone number and indicate the group or organization that they're affiliated with. It's pretty simple, and as I mentioned, it only applies to a paper registration application. It specifically prohibits any registration application from being denied on the basis of that information not being included, so it's not a new requirement in any way. And it prohibits the identifying information of the person helping from being entered into the registration record. So it's really just, um, something that registrars have been asking for, they came back again this year, and with that, I move the bill pass. Thank you.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Northwestern Fairfax, Senator Boyisco rise.
Mr. President, speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last year, this bill was vetoed by the governor. I actually carried a similar bill at the request of a group of students who asked that we allow the registrars to have access to their phone numbers or their emails if they so wish, in case there were a rejection of an improperly filled-out form. That bill did not pass, which made much more sense when you have hundreds of students who are, who are registering to vote, and the person who might be taking those registrations is not gonna have any of their personal information once they leave the campus or leave the drive. It made much more sense to me that we would allow the individual to be contacted by the registrar, and therefore I ask the body to vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill twenty-seven sixty-four?
Mr. President.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Well, the, uh, the Senator from Falk here, yield for one question.
Yes, I yield.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think I asked you some questions about this last year, and one of the things that I did when I went door-to-door last four years ago, among, aside from electronic apps and T applications, I also collected, or I got, if I found somebody who wasn't registered to vote, I would register them to vote using a digital device, if they had a, a driver's license. But if somebody does not have a driver's license, then the online voter registration system creates a filled-out PDF application, which you can then email to the applicant so they can print it at home and then submit it. And my question would be, given that that, say, the, the person at their door might create it electronically, but then email it to them so it becomes paper, what obligation does the person who helped them create the application electronically have under this bill? Because this bill says it only applies to paper, but theoretically, somebody who is using one of these online systems to generate the paper for them might fall into that trap. And I don't think that if I'm knocking doors and helping the people fill these out at their door, I should have put my name on their, on their, on their, on their voter registration. I could just see lots of different permutations of that playing out.
Well, Mr. President, I would just say, I would just have to read, to rely on the plain language of the bill, and when it says paper, collected on paper, then in that case, I believe it applies to those collected on paper. And in this case, what the registrars are asking for is that there's a way to allow a voter to be contacted if there's a mistake or if there's an error, or a way to contact the person who's collecting those applications and not doing it properly. So, and my view is, if you're able to allow people to register who believe that they're registered, um, and you're allowing registrars a way to resolve those problems, I think it's a good thing to do. I understand the question of the patron, but it says on paper, and I believe it's paper.
Right. Mr. President, you, one more question.
Senator Yields.
Yes, I yield.
Further question, you have the floor.
And I, I appreciate the fact that if, if I had, if, say, for example, if it was a candidate at somebody's door, they're having them complete paper, and they took the paperback, submitted paper, I agree with you, that's covered this bill, but the problem is, the language in this bill says, anyone who collects a completed paper registration or assists an applicant with the completion of a paper voter registration application, so if you're assisting them completing it digitally, and then that digital thing is then emailed to them and becomes paper, you've then assisted with completion. And given all the funny business that goes on with campaigns in this state, and people wanting to create charges and criminal offenses and allegations over very minor things to get press hits, you know, I worry about this kind of thing becoming an opportunity for somebody who's got nefarious intent to create a problem for somebody because of the ambiguity there, because I'm not sure the line between electronic and paper is quite as clear as I think everybody thinks it is. I mean, the gentleman lady, see any risk there?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, it says "created on paper," and I would just say to the gentleman that if it's created digitally and electronically, then it's not created on paper. That's all I would say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Appreciate the accommodation.
Thank the Senator. Do any other Senators wish to be heard on House Bill 2764? Sitting on, the question is, shall House Bill 2764 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
As 21 knows 19.
As 21 knows 19, House Bill 2764 passes.
Mr. President.
Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterline.
Having voted on the prevailing side in which the Senate failed to pass House Bill 2686 on page 44, I'd ask that that vote be reconsidered.
Question is, shall the vote by which House Bill 2686 failed be reconsidered? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
As 40 knows zero.
As 40 knows zero. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley.
Oh, joy, oh joy. Mr. President, I now move that House Bill 2686 pass, and for the reasons previously stated by both myself and the Senator from Rockbridge, I renew that motion. Rockingham, rock, rock and roll.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall House Bill 2686 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Okay, we're going to do this again. All right, here we go. Question is, shall House Bill 2686 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Do any Senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
As 22 knows 18.
As 22 knows 18, House Bill 2686 passes.
House Bill 1626. A bill relating to annual, to animal fighting presumption where cocks tethered. Reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice with a substitute.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane. Close the roll.
As 40 knows zero.
As 40 knows zero, House Bill 1848 passes.
House Bill 1979. A bill relating to assisted conception. Reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice with a substitute, and there is a floor amendment.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I'd yield to the Senator from Southern Fairfax.
Northern Fairfax.
Northern Fairfax.
Close. Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is agreed to. Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
Speaking to the bill, this has been called Jacob's Law, and it deals with surrogacy.
Senator, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We have a floor amendment, I believe it was Senator Peak.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Want to take that up?
All right. I move waiting, I move, I'll move that we waive the reading of the floor amendment.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the reading of the floor amendment is waived. Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peak.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking to the amendment.
Senator has the floor.
This is a very, one-sentence amendment to the surrogacy statute. This does not, this amendment does not affect the surrogate's right to make her choice about reproductive choices such as abortion or selective reproduction. This, and this, my amendment protects the actual surrogate's rights to make those decisions. What my bill does is prevent these provisions from being in these surrogacy contracts, which allows individuals who are not with child to demand that someone who is carrying a child undergo a selective reduction or an abortion for various reasons, some of which could be that they don't like the sex of the prospective child, or perhaps that there may be some potential illnesses for the child. I believe that this bill protects choice for the actual mother and prevents someone else from imposing their thoughts on the actual mother. I think there are some other people who may speak on this. Mr. President, I will come back after that.
For what purpose, this senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator Stewart, rise.
Mr. President, I rise to speak to the floor amendment.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, members of the Senate, I truly believe that regardless of whether you were pro-choice or pro-life, that this is an amendment that we all can and should agree on. And so even if you are, consider yourself pro-choice and are skeptical about this amendment being offered by those of us who are pro-life, I would just ask that you hear me out and keep an open mind before you decide on how you'll vote. And as is addressed in the underlying bill, pregnancies using surrogates are governed by what's called a surrogacy contract. The surrogacy contract is entered into between the intended parents on the one hand and the surrogate on the other. And these surrogacy contracts also contain what is called a selective reduction clause. The selective reduction clause says that if the implantation of the embryos results in a multiple pregnancy, like twins or triplets, that the surrogate is required to have one or more of the fetuses terminated or aborted, so that she carries to term only the one baby that the intended parents wanted in the first place. And that's why it's called a selective reduction clause. So by way of example, you have a couple, they're the intended parents, and they want to have one child via a surrogate. If multiple embryos are used and the surrogate becomes pregnant with twins, the selective reduction clause entered into, mind you, before the surrogate ever became pregnant, would, under the terms of the contract, require the surrogate to terminate the fetus, that second twin? But if, over the course of the pregnancy, for whatever reason, the surrogate decides that she is unwilling to abort the pregnancy, the multiple pregnancy, the selective reduction clause in the surrogacy contract holds that surrogate mother liable for her decision, her choice about her own pregnancy. She's required to pay back to the intended parents all payments that they have made to her for her health and her medical care, maternity clothing, medication, travel expenses, and even in some cases, the intended parent's own attorney's fees. And so you can imagine that the surrogate can be on the hook for tens of thousands of dollars if she chooses not to abort the multiple pregnancy. And so that is the policy decision for this body to make today. Should a woman's decision over whether to carry her pregnancy to term be signed away simply by entering into a business contract before she even becomes pregnant in the first place? And should the other party to that contract, the intended parents, be able to use what is effectively and essentially financial coercion to influence a woman's decision over whether or not to terminate the pregnancy or to carry that pregnancy to term? And I would submit to you that whether you were pro-life or you were pro-choice, that neither of those policies is sound. And that is why Senator Peak's floor amendment is necessary. It does not say that a woman cannot choose abortion in these cases. It simply says that the other party to the contract cannot require her to have one. That's very important. It leaves that decision, that choice, with the woman, with the mother, who is carrying the children, and it protects her autonomy and her ability to make her own decisions. So if you're pro-life, you like this amendment because it prevents a Virginia surrogacy contract from requiring an abortion. And if you're pro-choice, I would respectfully submit you should also like this amendment because it prevents a Virginia surrogacy contract from nullifying a woman's autonomy and decision over whether to carry her pregnancy to term. And with that, Mr. President, I'd ask that the body support the floor amendment.
What purpose, Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell, rise.
Well, Senator from Lynchburg, yield for a question.
Senator Yields.
Yes.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
So it's my understanding that surrogacy, surrogacy has been around for a long time. Can the gentleman tell me how long surrogacy has been around?
Senator has the floor.
No, I cannot.
Further question?
Do you want me to yield for another question?
Yes.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Well, gentleman, you would agree that surrogacy has at least been around for 30 years.
You have the floor.
I know surrogacy exists. I know they've been doing it for a long time. I do not know how long.
Further question?
The gentleman yield for another question?
Senator Yields.
I'll yield all day.
Senator Yields.
I'm no expert in selective reduction or, you know, difficult pregnancy, but at least according to Wikipedia, selective reduction's been around since the 1980s. It is mainly, primarily, and I think only, used with regard to people that have trouble having pregnancy, and, you know, we get into like quintuplet or sextuplet type situations. Does the gentleman agree that that's generally the practice, and it's been around since the early 1980s?
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Senator from?
Eastern Fairfax.
Eastern Fairfax. I happen to be an expert in this area to a certain extent, not from the surrogacy standpoint, but from having to make that decision. In years past, approximately 21, 22 years ago, my children, the quadruplets are now 21, they, and you remember the septuplet mom, at that point in surrogacy issues, they would implant a multiple number of embryos to see how many took. Usually not that many took. Sometimes there'd be four, five, three, four, five, and the doctors would recommend selective reduction, which is, they take a needle, they go in, shoot potassium chloride into a beating heart to cause that baby to have a heart attack and die. Then they go in and suck that baby out, and the mother will go on to continue her pregnancy. This is not a situation that I go lightly into to intrude on other people's decisions. My wife and I had that decision to make, not through surrogacy, but with quadruplets, and the doctors recommend that you do that. I would just say to the Senator from Fairfax, that once you've been in that room and you've seen that heartbeat, the thought of someone taking a needle, injecting that heartbeat with potassium chloride, killing that baby, and then sucking it out is a very, very difficult decision. This bill, this amendment to this bill, does not remove that decision from the mother who is carrying those babies. This bill keeps that decision with the mother who is carrying the babies. This bill prevents people who are not going to carry a baby, and many times will never be able to carry a baby, from telling someone who is carrying a baby that she has to go in and kill that baby. That's the purpose of this amendment. And this amendment leaves that choice, that choice, with the woman who is pregnant with the babies. So that is the purpose of this amendment, and I hope that answered your question.
Will gentleman yield for another question?
Senator Yields.
As I said, I'm here all day.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Agree that this bill was introduced because of the Obergefell decision, which legalized same-sex marriage, and that because of the Obergefell decision, Virginia needs to bring its code up to date with the United States Constitution, and that same-sex couples are afforded the same rights as heterosexual couples. Does the gentleman agree that's the law in this country, and that that's the purpose of this bill?
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is not the purpose of my amendment. That may be the purpose of the bill. From what I understand, for the purpose of the bill, I saw the couple, they spoke in courts with their three beautiful children, and it's called Jacob's Law, and I know it's to address the issue of surrogate parents. I don't, I have no idea how that has anything to do with Obergefell decision, which was, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't that the gay marriage? I don't, sort of my knowledge, yeah, this doesn't have anything to do with gay marriage. And certainly, I do know for a fact that my amendment has absolutely nothing to do with marriage. My amendment merely prevents someone requiring another person to undergo an abortion simply by entering into a contract. My amendment simply leaves the choice with the pregnant woman and has absolutely nothing to do with the sexual preferences for anyone.
Further question?
The gentleman yield one more question.
Yes. Not just all day, but I'm here all week.
Okay.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Well, I'm not sure if the gentleman's aware or not, but I carried this bill twice, once earlier, once last year, and once earlier this year. Neither time in committee did this subject come up during any of the Courts of Justice Committee hearings on my bill, because I don't think this practice has anything to do with the purpose of the bill. And I'll just ask the gentleman whether he's aware of any data, statistics, or any information that would suggest with regard to same-sex couples trying to have a child, whether there's any evidence that this practice has anything to do with the purpose of this bill.
Senator has the floor.
Yeah, Mr. President. I am not speaking to the bill, and the reason that I've made this amendment is because this bill has made it out onto the Senate floor. I tried to make it in the committee, and it did not pass in the committee, and I'm trying again here on the floor. I will tell you that I don't know who keeps, would keep statistics of selective reduction, or whether surrogates are undergoing abortions or selective reductions. I do not know those statistics.
I think the gentleman's speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
I'm sorry, speaking to the amendment.
Amendment, Senator has the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the gentleman's views on this and the sincerity with which he brings this, but I would just say that this amendment doesn't have anything to do with this bill. And if this policy that the gentleman's attempting to graft onto this bill, if he would like to do that, it belongs in a different bill and not on this bill, which is only an attempt to bring Virginia law up to speed with the United States Constitution, so that we don't end up having to pay attorney's fees in a couple lawsuits that are out there because our laws are currently vitally of the United States Constitution. That's the point of the bill, and we shouldn't be grafting other types of policies onto it that don't have anything to do with the point of the bill. And I think we should reject the amendment.
For what purpose, the Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask the patron, the Senator from Lynchburg, a question.
Senator Yields.
I rise for a question, Mr. President.
You have the floor.
Mr. President, since we're talking about a contractual agreement with your amendment, isn't it true that if the surrogate mother wanted such a provision in her contract, she should, she could go forward and require that in the contract without this amendment or without this legislative language, since it's a contractual agreement between two parties?
Senator has the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I would agree with the gentleman lady that it is a contractual provision that I am concerned about. I would just state that in many of these situations, these surrogacy contracts, someone is getting paid a lot of money to be a surrogate mother. Frequently, they need the money, they are not as sophisticated as the people who are paying the money and undergoing the provisions, the surrogacy issue. So I submit that this amendment, at this time, keeps these surrogate contracts in compliance with Virginia law, that no one should be made to take a life, but allows that decision to remain with the mother as to whether or not she wants to have an abortion, a selective reduction, or carry out her pregnancy to the full term. My concern, and why I bring this, is because I believe there's an unequal footing of women who are willing to be surrogates, who need the money, and in some cases, may be desperate for the money, and other people who have a whole lot of money and are desperate for children. children and may have an unfair advantage in crafting these contracts.
Mr. President, speaking to the amendment.
Senator has the floor.
Again, I would go back to the concept that these illegally constructed contracts between a surrogate mother and potential parents, and what the mother is expecting, I would expect there'd be legal advice available. There's no need for this. If the, if the mother is really concerned, surrogate mother is concerned about this, she can place it into a contract herself. There is no need for this legislation to go forward. So I would ask the body to vote against the amendment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Senator, for what purpose is Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterline rise?
Speak to the amendment.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I hope it'll be the decision of the Senate to adopt the amendment. And speaking to that, I would just point out to, there were lots of questions about if this amendment were appropriate. We all know it's appropriate, and it's in this section, because if you don't like an amendment and it's not in the appropriate bill, you ask the president, is this amendment germane? And we all know it's germane, and it deals directly with this. I'd also remind each of the speakers who have spoken against this bill, or against the amendment, of a bill that was introduced earlier this year, that 15 Democratic senators, either patroned or co-patroned, and I believe that once you add up the members on the committee that voted on it, nearly every Democratic member of this body has now voted or co-patroned a bill this year, this very session, that reads, "Every individual has a fundamental right to choose or refuse contraceptive or sterilization. Every individual who becomes pregnant, every individual who becomes pregnant has a fundamental right to choose to carry a pregnancy to term, give birth to a child, or terminate the pregnancy. The Commonwealth shall not, in the regulation or provisions of benefits, facilities, services, or information, deny or interfere with an individual's fundamental rights, including individuals under state control or supervision, to choose or refuse contraceptive or sterilization, to choose to carry a pregnancy to term, give birth to a child, or terminate a pregnancy. The Commonwealth should not discriminate in the protection or enforcement of these fundamental rights on the basis of sex, disability, race, ethnicity, gender identity, age, marital status, national origin, immigration status, religion, or sexual orientation." And then the last provisions are some legalese that's important to the bill. But I would just point out to everyone, we might have some disagreements on what restrictions ought to be on abortion. I know there's some folks that, that supported this bill that don't think there should be any, but in that bill, it was very clearly, and every speaker that's spoken against this amendment, co-patroned or patroned that bill, that said, "Virginia women have a right to carry their pregnancy to term if they so choose." And this amendment makes that very clear. We all know that under this contract, there's unequal bargaining power, and that's why this amendment is critical to be adopted. And I would just point out to the senator who suggested that this bill was about some other things and there might be some concerns about it, you can look at how a lot of us on this side have voted on issues related to that, but that's not what this is about. And so I think this is something that every member of this chamber has pretty much gone on record saying, "You have a right to carry your child to term." Every, almost every Democrat threw the patronage of legislation this year, and I'm pretty sure every Republican believes that as well. So I think this amendment is entirely appropriate, and it ought to be adopted.
What purpose is the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan rise?
Speaking to the amendment, Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I take issue with the underlying assumption that there's unequal bargaining power in negotiating a contract for surrogacy. I think what a lot of people are forgetting is being pregnant, even today in 2019, is extremely dangerous for a woman herself. As someone who almost died giving birth myself, I know that before I decide to get pregnant and enter into a contract to become a surrogate for someone else, I'm going to think that through very carefully. I am not going to put my life at risk to carry a child that I'm then going to give away if I feel like I don't have equal bargaining power, because my life is going to be at risk. And I'm going to make sure, before I ever make the decision to be a surrogate, I'm going to think through all of the possibilities, including what happens if there are multiples. Because again, the reason doctors recommend selective reduction is twofold. Because the chances of survival of the remaining fetus is increased, but the mother's life is also at risk. And I just, I cannot believe that someone thinks that a woman is going to decide, "Well, I desperately need money, so I'm going to go enter a surrogacy contract," and not think through before I'm pregnant all of the provisions in that contract. These decisions can and should be made between the parties to that contract, the woman who is putting her own life at risk to carry a child, and the family who is entrusting this woman to carry the child for them. And there is no reason we should not trust the three of them to enter into a contract that protects all of their interests. And this amendment basically says, "We state government no better than you." And for that reason, I think it's a mistake, and I ask you to vote against it.
What purpose does the Senator from Loudon, Senator Black rise?
Rise to speak in favor of the amendment.
Senator has the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen, I found the discussion of this rather interesting, a little bit confusing. First of all, we know that if someone in this body signed a contract for surrogacy, that they would certainly be well-informed, and they would understand what was going on. The fact of the matter is that the bulk, not all, but the bulk of individuals who enter into these contracts are sometimes not even capable with the English language. They are not necessarily people who are highly literate. They need the money. And for those people, this really becomes a contract of adherence. They don't know the details. They can't read all the fine print. They can't comprehend the legalese. And so it is a contract of adherence. It is not a contract that is entered into with, with full comprehension of all of the, all of the outcomes and so forth that, that might become evident later on. And it's for this reason that often, when we deal with contracts, we many times say that certain provisions are void as against public policy. And I think this is one of those, the notion that a woman should be compelled to submit to having salt injected into the heart of her child to kill it, that should be void as against public policy. Now, as far as the identity of the individual who offers the contract to the surrogate, I don't, I really don't comprehend the rationality of that. It really doesn't matter who it is that has, has offered the contract. The fact of the matter is that it is the woman who is carrying the children who has this decision to make, and it should be her decision. Now, I understand that there may be doctors who will say, "Well, selectively eliminating some of these children might be safer." And he might be right. But that is the decision, not of the doctor. The doctor can give advice. He's free to give advice, or she's free to give advice. But the person who makes the decision is the person who is carrying the child. And so whether there is a doctor who advises, to me, the doctor is irrelevant, except that he, he may persuade the woman one way or the other. The identity of the person who, who starts the contract process, that person is, is not relevant. The only person who really is relevant to this is the woman who is carrying that child. And all that this amendment does is it says that that woman will have the same right to choose that any other woman would have. And I don't think that we should view the surrogate mother as somehow subordinate, somehow less human, less entitled to human dignity than anyone else who is giving birth to a child. So for those reasons, I really think it's very compelling to support this amendment.
What purpose Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. Speak to the amendment.
Senator, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I have, I want to say first that I support this bill. I support the opportunity for life, especially for the embryos, but for any child to have a family, for adults to experience parenting, I do support it. I have been the doctor for women who have been surrogates, and for women who have received donor embryos, and for same-sex couples, and it is a beautiful experience all the way around. I had no idea, before I got information about this bill, that a surrogate's contract, which in my experience tend to be standardized contracts, not individualized to particular families, I had no idea that there was so much coercion to remove a patient's rights, as is in this contract. I, I think that there are multitude of variables that are here. There are conversations that would ensue between the adopting parents and the surrogate and the physician, but it concerns me immensely that there are financial coercions. A woman doesn't know what she's going to do in a crisis moment like that until she's in the moment. And a contract that you sign, the women that I have seen been surrogates are some of the most genuine, beautiful, caring women, willing to take on a really big lift for somebody else to experience parenthood. And I, I don't think that maybe their, their minds are completely set on the contract ahead of time. I think they're, they're set on the gift and the humanity. So I think that there needs to be room for decisions to be made in the moment, and I would speak in favor of this amendment to make sure that all parties' rights in that conversation are protected and not subjugated to a pre-existing contract that was made outside of the circumstances in the moment.
Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill, on the floor amendment to House Bill 1979? Seeing none, the question is, shall the floor amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. The floor amendment fails. Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
My mouth is full, excuse me. This is, as I started to say, called Jacob's Law. It's named for a beautiful little boy that we saw in Courts Committee, whose parents used, he was a surrogate baby, and he, his embryo was one that was going to be destroyed. So that's what's brought about this bill. What, as you all know, we, almost 25 years ago, passed our surrogacy law, and it's now time to update it. Lot has happened in those two and a half decades with surrogate children and surrogate families and acceptance of all of this. What this bill does is codifies existing language found in contractual agreements for surrogacy. It aligns the surrogacy law with the adoption law regarding who's eligible to be a parent. The bill rescues children, who would not otherwise be rescued by potential parents, and in that sense, it's an extremely pro-family piece of legislation. In the case regarding Jacob, for whom the bill was named, his embryo is said to be destroyed if his parents did not accept that embryo. This bill allows Virginians to use embryos currently in storage and do less expensive administrative processes instead of an adoption post-birth. One of the wonders of surrogacy is that every child is a wanted child. So I hope we'll pass the bill.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill 1979? Seeing none, the question is, shall House Bill 1979 pass? All in favor, or the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote?
[beep]
Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 28, noes 12.
Ayes 28, noes 12. House Bill 1979 passes.
House Bill 2107, a bill relating to public schools parental review of certain anti-bullying and suicide prevention materials, reported from the Committee on Education and Health.
Senator from Bedford, Senator Newman.
Mr. President, I move that the bill is passed, and speaking of that.
Senator, you have the floor.
Mr. President, this bill came before the committee related to the bullying statute, and basically what the, what the legislation does is it allows a parent the opportunity to see the materials that are being used in any anti-bullying or suicide prevention program, and if the parent reviews what is happening and decides they want to opt out, they may do so. Mr. President, I hope that we pass the bill.
Thank the senator. For what purpose Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben rise?
To ask if the Senator would yield for a question.
Senator Yield for a question. Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Looking, I would ask the Senator, I'm looking at the bill, and I see it provides the right to excuse the child from anti-bullying, anti-bullying curriculum, and I was just wondering if there was any real-life reason articulated in the committee when it was presented.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I apologize. I did not hear the first part of the question, therefore I don't.
Sorry. Senator, restate the question.
Just to repeat it, I read the bill, and I was wondering if, when it was presented in committee, if there was any real-life scenario, any real-life reason to opt children out of the anti-bullying curriculum.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, it's a good question. The bill was heard in subcommittee, and as the gentleman may know, our committee does not rehear testimony that was heard in subcommittee. The bill was heard actually in the subcommittee of the gentleman from Grayson, and they, they heard testimony on this bill, sir.
I would ask if the gentleman from Grayson would yield briefly.
Well, Senator Yield.
Oh, Yield.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
Thanks. I thank the gentleman, and I was just, wanted to restate the question, if in subcommittee there was any real-life scenario why someone would want to opt their child out of anti-bullying curriculum.
Senator has the floor.
There was a video that was shown, or that was offered that we didn't view, but it was sent around to all the members of this going on, and, and each member got a copy. I don't know how many members actually viewed it.
I thank the gentleman.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan rise?
Would the gentleman from Grayson rise for a question?
Will Senator Yield for a question?
I can't see over there, so, just point of clarification, the only thing that the parent would be excusing the child from is the, is the portion of the curriculum that would show that particular video, not the full anti-bullying curriculum as a whole. Is that correct?
Senator has the floor.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is the Senator from Prince William County, Senator McPike rise?
Mr. President, I rise to caution the body on this bill. I think- I think it's, intent is probably well-meaning, but I have to say, Mr. President, you know, I have a high school that I walk with every year on suicide and bullying prevention efforts in each year. And each year, the school system does it, they have a number of kids that come out because of the training and actually report abuse at home. And this is, puts into a scenario where the abuser can block their child from receiving potentially life-saving information. I'd urge the body to really think about this and pump the brakes. Sometimes our school systems are, in fact, the last result, the last lifeline to our kids who are struggling with something at home. And I've talked to some of these kids with real issues. What you're doing is providing a stop to actually information that might give the kid hope to think about approaching someone, whether it be a, a student, a counselor, or a teacher, with something that's going to potentially save the rest of their life. We have an abysmal rate of suicide, abysmal. This, this bill, I think, is well-meaning, but it's not good public policy. We actually have to increase the amount of information we get to our kids. Kids, kids are dying at 10 years old to suicide, 10. These are actually targeted to much older. We've got to do a much better job actually going down into middle school and other, figuring out what's going on, because there are struggles, there are kids that come over internationally, kids that are right here at home, all sorts of scenarios that you, we can't even imagine. And I think this is a bill that actually hurts kids. It hurts kids, and I, I ask the body to vote no on the measure.
For what purpose, Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think if you look at the bill specifically, it really only speaks to the parent's opportunity and right to review any audiovisual materials that contain graphic, sexual, or violent contact used in the program, not the whole program. We want the children to make sure that they have the opportunity to get exposed to all of that information, but there was a particular incident, incident where several children were very upset, and there was an inappropriate choice of very graphic video material by the teacher, and parents need to have a say in what their children are exposed to. I think this is a way of curtailing overstepping of the teachers in choosing their materials. I hope that you will support the bill.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Bedford, Senator Newman rise?
Mr. President, just to speak briefly.
Senator has the floor.
You know, we, we heard this in committee, and it's one bill that's pretty easily accessible on your computers. I urge you to pull it up and read it, because it is not exactly as it's been described. The senator from Henrico is exactly right. All that's in question here is whether or not a parent has the right to excuse from a particular part if the material that they're excusing him from is graphic or violent. That's it. Not all the other things that were spoke of earlier. It is those two items that a parent have the right to do that. I hope we would pass the bill.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall House Bill 2107 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, 31, noes, none.
Ayes, 31, noes, nine. House Bill 2107 passes.
House Bill 2124, a bill relating to length of school term waiver for school closings resulting from evacuation, reported from the Committee on Education and Health.
Senator from Bedford, Senator Newman.
Mr. President, I move the bill passed in speaking of the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, this bill is one that is identical to the one from, the gentleman from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker. It is a bill that simply allows